Recording in progress.
I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Shall we begin with a roll call?
Chairman Harper?
Here.
Vice Chair Rose?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
Commissioner Witty?
Here.
Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Gordon?
Here.
Commissioner Mojo?
Here.
Commissioner Gross?
Here.
Commissioner Shanahan?
Here.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments, but seeing nobody in the Town Hall and as far as I can tell, we have no one online, I think we'll open and close public comment quickly. The next item is the approval of the minutes of our meeting in June. Would somebody like to move approval of those minutes? Somebody need the minutes? I read them, but I'll...
I will move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have to do a roll call on this?
Yeah, because Ann's online, so... Chairman Harper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Witty?
Abstain.
Commissioner Barnes?
Abstain.
Commissioner Gordon?
Abstain as well, I wasn't there.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanahan?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation on the status of the comprehensive plan update. Do you want to introduce this, Renee?
Sure, we have Nora Blanff from Cushing Terrell here this evening. She has been managing our project from the beginning and she's going to give a presentation and an update as to where we're at and where we're going next.
Great, Sisahn? Okay, great. Okay, yes, thank you all for having me this evening. Really excited to present what we've been up to so far. Oh my gosh, it's so intimate. And really looking for feedback tonight. So, we will be sharing what we've heard, but we are also looking for feedback on how to better engage the community in the future. Okay, so, yep, that's our agenda, I already went through that. Timeline wise, we're in the beginning of August, so we're probably looking at, we've done our big open house and pop-up engagement in May, and now we're looking at potentially like a September, October draft plan, very exciting, and then engagement associated with that. And then looking at this November-December adoption timeline is probably ambitious, so potentially little into 2026. Our process so far, we've updated you until our last open house, which we did an online survey to let folks know, like if you weren't available to attend the open house, you could fill out the survey online, and then here we are today, Planning Commission update, we're going to Town Council next week, and then, oh no, I can do this, yes. And then I'll get into our next steps at the end of this presentation. So we did our speaker series events, which were really exciting, and I'll go into in more detail in a minute. We had our first open house, which was really successful, and I think we had some takeaways from that. And then we did our online survey that was associated with the open house number one, so figuring out what that means for the vision, mission, chapter goals, and opportunity areas. So really the purpose of the speaker series was to bring together a group of people who have really different perspectives for a discussion that is well-rounded around these topics that were highlighted in the beginning of our engagement event as important to the community, and then they're kind of complex topics, right? Like, I mean, even a comprehensive plan is pretty complex, and economic development, like what does that mean? So trying to break it down into easier pieces for the community to digest, and then be able to ask questions to panelists, to everyone in the room, to just have more of a robust conversation about topics that are not so easily digestible to everyone in the community. So, these are some highlights from our speaker series. For cultural intelligence, one of the best quotes was, "It doesn't cost you any money to change your mind." So some of the key takeaways, it's important to have actual physical spaces in the community, to have social gathering places where people feel comfortable connecting, and then working with populations that are not part of the majority of the demographic requires approaches that need, that, different approaches that are needed to gather diverse voices. And then success with public participation is meeting people where they are, engaging them in places that don't require for them to go out of their social norm. For economic development, one of the key quotes that people really latched on to on this one was like charming little shops have charming little hours because they can't afford to hire help. They want to go home and have dinner too, but the national retailers, or at least the most successful formulas, tend to have a mix of the two. So some of the takeaways from that speaker series was, is that Superior's planning is preparing for opportunities like the Sundance Film Festival, and retail is really difficult as a real estate used to realize. So, successful formulas mix local and national retailers, and then expectations are different to bring jobs into downtown as to how to strengthen downtown Superior. Housing, great quote here, "The health of a community is enhanced by having a really well-rounded housing stock for all the different participants and all different needs." So, other takeaways we brought from that speaker series was, building community can be challenging when many residents live elsewhere from where they work. Missing middle housing can take a variety of shapes and styles and financing mechanisms. There have been no consistent studies that have shown that affordable housing negatively affects property values. Generally, the impact is neutral or actually has positive outcomes. Transportation, quote here was, "We can really benefit from having a lot of different land uses that are sending their vehicular trips to each other." Takeaways here, traffic is primarily influenced by residential and commercial land use and the demands at various times of day and during the week. Create a mix of land use that allows people to travel shorter distances to destinations combined with transportation alternatives, biking and walking. Between land uses can help reduce congestion, and then often parking requirements are outdated and the regulations require developments, developers to build more spaces than are potentially necessary.
I don't want to interrupt.
No, no, please.
But I wanted to know when you wanted us to ask questions.
Sure, let's go.
Anytime?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. Which slide?
I'll go back to cultural intelligence. I'm curious as to what we have done in determining the population trends, and I didn't know whether, I didn't see it come out in that particular speaker series, but I wanted to just highlight it for you that that's one of the things that I'm going to be looking at as we begin, what's the population trend, what, you know, the age demographic, the diversity demographic, you know, our, you know, and it's not only trends within our community, but also in the general area. So I just wanted to alert you to that. The second question I had was, when, and this is sort of a general, when we talk about key takeaways, I'm trying to determine who made that key takeaway determination, in other words, who's, is it Cushing Terrell that's saying, "These are the key takeaways that we think came out of those meetings"?
Okay, so I'll address your first question about the demographic makeup of the community. The last time that we gave a presentation to you all, what we found was that the Asian community has increased significantly in Superior, and that one's harder to break down by category because...
I remember that piece, but what I, I'm just simply saying that in the cultural intelligence speaker series, when that, that subject matter sort of was not one of those topics, and I just wanted to make sure that we don't forget about those kinds of things.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. And your second question was...
Yeah, who's making determination as to what the key takeaways are?
Oh, yes, that's us, so we'll, we'll take all of the data and then we'll kind of quantify it in terms of, there's a general theme that's been emerging, and we'll, we'll put general comments under a specific theme, and then that's how we're pulling out key takeaways is like, I mean, with qualitative data, it's, it's difficult to like necessarily bunch or like make everything fit into a specific box, but there are general themes that we're able to distill from the input, yes.
It's you as our consultant.
Correct, but yes, we can provide the raw data from the surveys in the open house if that's desired.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to know who's doing it.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll also add that they put this together and then staff reviews it, and we ask questions, and so, you know, they're putting together the key takeaways based on some criteria that they created while listening to and participating in the conversations for the speaker series, and then we reviewed those takeaways and provided some comments and feedback, and so... If you have comments on them, feel free to send them or discuss.
I just want to go back to the one on the previous slide under the last bullet point, under, no, next slide, under housing about affordable housing. And I agree, there have been no consistent studies that have sort of discussed the issue of property values, but I wanted to know where the generally comes from.
Oh, I mean, I think it's just an agglomeration of the studies and what has been shown, like it's, it's never really been shown that there are negative property values, but it's either neutral or positive.
Got it.
Yeah. Moving on, okay. So we did have the in-person event at the Community Center, which was amazing, and then we did have an online survey so that folks who were unable to attend could participate. So the open house was on May 28th. We had 60-plus people, at least 60 people, signed in, which was great. We had a lot of comments, and what we were presenting to folks was the planning process, engagement we've done thus far, existing conditions, the vision, the draft vision and goals, the draft future land use map, opportunity areas, and then some transportation priorities. And this is just kind of like a high-level summary, and then we're going to get a little bit more detailed into how folks about, felt about each station. So, first takeaway was that existing housing and office space should be filled before constructing new development. Downtown Superior should be complete with more office and retail spaces, and then vertically integrated mixed-use development, including housing at Superior Marketplace, and folks were open to including housing in that area. There was also support for mixed uses that provide residents with convenient housing and dining options. Affordable housing was supported for locations that make sense, supported by transportation options and access to retail, and then interest in maintaining open space, parks, and recreation throughout the town, with many passionate about the Town 15 opportunity area. I will say that I think that there was some online presence about the open house for the comprehensive plan that was really targeted at Town 15, and so there was quite a skew of comments that people showed up to vote for open space, which wasn't really the purpose of the open house, but that's what happened. And so we've tried to pull, obviously that's a desire of residents, but we've also tried to pull some other ideas that were not so heavily skewed from the input. So, these are responses, these are combined between the open house and the online survey that was an option for folks who couldn't attend. The vision, respondents agree that the vision statement should...
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely, yeah.
How many people respond, you had about 60-plus people present at the event?
Yes.
How many people responded online, do you know?
I think it was probably around 90?
So there were more people responding online than were actually present at the event?
I'll get you a number in just a second, I'll link it up.
Yes, thank you. There, yes, there were, there was a disparity between online responses and in-person responses. There were definitely more online than there were in person. The vision statement should celebrate Superior's uniqueness and value about the small-town feel, and then support for striving to be an inclusive community and a welcome, welcoming of diversity. For the values, respondents support the emphasis on attracting more businesses to downtown Superior specifically, and then concerns about impacts of growing population, congestion, schools, and traffic.
I just want to point out, it's interesting that they're worried about congestion in schools when we have declining enrollment.
I think, I think that sometimes school congestion can be more of a, an excuse for concerns about density, in, in my experience.
It's just interesting that the perception is very different from the reality.
Exactly, yeah. So for the chapter goals for the community chapter, they should be clear, measurable, and attainable, which I think is, it's tough because goals are supposed to be aspirational, and then we get to the strategy level, and that can be more measurable and attainable, and then the action level is very measurable and attainable. So that could be more of a perception or communication flaw there. And then transparency and communication and how decisions are made and aligned with community opinions for land use. There were concerns about goals for new development with current home vacancies and unoccupied commercial spaces. There was some strong feelings that Superior should maintain open space, parks, recreation, since that's a factor in, in terms of what makes this community so attractive. And then expressing a need for a better balance of land uses that support existing residents, such as public and community spaces.
Did we, did we point out during this process that something like 40% of the land in Boulder already is open space or parks?
Superior.
Sorry, in Superior.
Forty percent, yes. And that is.
Do people know that or was this?
It, it was one of our boards at the open house. I think we've really expressed the fact that that is unique and such a differentiator for this town.
Do we have an idea of, of that number? How much is open space and how much is natural? You have natural open space with or without trails?
And parks.
Yes, the open space committee has that number, has those numbers.
I think we have a map too. And if it's not available online, we have like a GIS map that we have.
Yeah, if we can, if, if the, if the number is that 40% of the land in Superior is open space or parks, my question is, what's the breakdown between open space and?
Natural.
Natural.
Is that something?
What I consider to be natural, for example, where the goats are is natural, but that's considered to be open space and it's totally unusable for the goats.
Do you, do you think that's?
They love it.
So I can, I, I, I will bring you answers to those, to that question. Do you think it's worthwhile to include a, in the land use chapter or something on the open, like a map with a breakdown of open space?
I think it would be helpful because if, if we're. Talking about what's the break, what's the difference between, you know, truly just open business and, and land use that is parks and recreation? I'd be curious as to know that.
Sure. So in that, maybe in the open space.
Do you count trails as recreation?
Recreation.
I would, I would. Count trails as recreation, yes.
The trails are generally, yeah, they're part of the, if they fall, the way that the map works basically is like a parcel, on a parcel basis. So if the parcel is open space or park, then the trail within that area is counted. We also have mapped like the distance and area of the trail system as a whole throughout the, so I can, I can ask Alex, who does our GIS, like how, like how to break down his map of the open space and parks and trails?
My concern is that when you hear that 40% number.
What does that include?
The question is, what is the 40% number?
Sure. And I think it's worth adding.
There's a difference between Wildflower Park and the trail that runs through the neighborhood.
Sure, absolutely. I think it's, that's a great question and comment and we can get a breakdown for you, but in the comprehensive plan, it might just be like a, like a, a general overview and then a breakdown of this amount and this amount without going too granular. But I'll share the granular stuff with y'all.
Yeah. I just want to, if, if, if the number, you know, we keep on, then, you know, say the word, you know, the, that's not the 20%, but if it's, you know, if it's 20 and 20, or 30 and 10, or 35 and 5, I'd sort of like.
Absolutely.
The question about the housing vacancy, are there really a lot of home vacancies in Superior?
That is likely more due to parcels that were.
Rebuilt?
Yeah. And rebuilt or non, not rebuilt.
Yeah, so a lot of the comments talked about allowing people to rebuild and then also finishing out downtown. So when you see those comments, it's pertaining, generally speaking, I, I don't know, some other, someone may have commented not related to those things, but I, those were like the specific, when people said specifically, they were talking about allowing people to rebuild and downtown, like finishing out, building out downtown.
I haven't looked in a while, but the last time I looked, we were about like 75% rebuilt. Where are we at now?
Perception is not always reality, but.
But there was a map and I was watching it all the time, the first year.
It's still here. I just have to find it.
From a consultant's perspective, so take it as you will, but there are a lot of excuses to oppose density and oppose any change in an area that people feel connected to and feel a lot of love for and change incites fear. So a lot of times people use excuses like, oh, well, we need to fill in this area before we even consider X and Y and whatever. It's, a lot of times it's like, are you really just more scared about change that's close to you or a change that could affect your life and, and things like that? I think Renee's got some numbers.
Yeah, so 74% have certificates of occupancy. And then even more, obviously there's more under construction, so three.
We're like at what, three and a half years now? I swear like the national benchmark before this was 25% in five years. So we're like.
We're well ahead of.
We're like setting the new benchmark.
The disaster recovery manager has a lot of like statistics on where people, where municipalities are generally at, at this point. And like our area, like Superior specifically, Louisville as well, and some in Boulder County, but just generally from the Marshall Fire, we're far ahead of where most communities are at this point in the recovery process. We also had 119 people respond to the online survey. And she has, you know, responses received for each individual question, but.
Right.
Overall, 119.
And we think the 119 people were separate from the 60 odd who attended?
Not necessarily.
We can't, yeah.
There's no way to.
We can't discern. Yep. That's the game we're in is trying to make it as open and inclusive as possible, but also trying to make, trying to make sense of the data. Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
This is Anne.
Hi.
Hey, so people talked about wanting to fill in existing housing downtown Superior, et cetera. What is the runway that we would be looking at if we're, if somebody wants to propose housing, housing development of some, of some sort until that comes to fruition? In all likelihood, but we are not talking months. We are talking years, I assume?
Yeah, I mean, what a question. It depends on the owner of the property, the developer's cash flow, what that developer is experienced in developing and what, what the development appetite is in terms of the comprehensive plan and then how town leadership accepts or, or is resistant to it. So it's, that sounds like a cop out answer, but it's so dependent on if the developer is looking at making a commercial use, like how many households they're looking at in their trade area, or if they're looking at developing residential, if it aligns with the comprehensive plan. So this is a really important process because we're determining what town leadership and the community feel makes the most sense in these really small areas of opportunity that you have left to, to grow. I don't have a silver bullet and I don't think anyone does, but that's why this process is really important because we're determining what makes sense where and where town leadership and the community is willing to make some trade offs. Because there are areas that make sense for commercial and there are areas that don't in our areas of opportunity. And so.
I want to follow up on something you just said.
Thank you.
We have existing properties, especially in downtown Superior that have, that are going to be residential. And my question is, what, what are we expecting? The additional from that, from the already approved residential uses? What are we expecting the increase in residential?
Excuse me, Lonnie?
Yeah.
Could you use your microphone, please?
Yeah, I apologize.
Thank you.
What are we, what's our, what are we expecting is the increase in residential over the current level? In other words, how many more houses are we expecting? How many more apartments are we expecting from existing approved plans?
In downtown Superior?
In downtown Superior.
None.
Well, I mean, the ones that are.
No, 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 no.
There's, there's, there's a list of home, like the number of homes that haven't been.
Haven't been built.
Permitted or built yet are available.
Right.
For purchase, you know, in downtown. And then there's also the apartment complex in downtown. So, and then there's also Superior Shores Town Homes that aren't fully built out down on Colton. Yeah.
So, and so I guess my question is, what is, what, do we have an idea of what is not within, it's sort of in the hopper, but not yet built? And how, you know, and so it's just a question. I don't know that anybody can give me an answer right now.
Senior housing.
Oh, yeah, and the senior, and the senior affordable housing complex is also kind of in process.
In process.
So, yeah, I don't know the exact number that haven't been built in the, in the single family in downtown. And then there's, is it?
But I think that there was a limit on residential units in downtown. It was something like 1,400.
Yes, so it was 1,400 and within a couple, 100 of that.
I mean, I think when we did the 250 units for, that are being built on block, block eight, that got us to something like 1,400. I mean, it was very close.
It's very close, yeah.
1,400 total.
Yes, and all throughout downtown.
Right.
I, but I, you're asking about where we're at in the construction.
Right.
And I can get that number, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's just a, you know, just a factoid.
250 that are in construction of the apartments.
Apartments at least.
And then 50 at the affordable housing, senior, affordable senior housing. And then however many, you know, single family homes are left in downtown, plus however many, I think there's four or five buildings in the shores that haven't been built yet.
There's some town houses behind the, that haven't been built as well in the downtown area.
Yeah, there are some townhouses, yes.
Just looking at some areas where they don't have parking lots, I assume. There's a couple buildings there.
I just sort of, for, for my own purposes, estimated that we were talking about another 500.
Yeah.
Living units that are not yet built and occupied. Just that, just, that, that's the number that I sort of had in my head and I was just asking whether, you know.
It's probably slightly less than that, but not, I mean, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I know the 250 plus the 50.
Yeah, well, that puts us at 300.
Right, exactly. So you're probably not super far off.
Yeah.
But I don't think that there's another 100 left in downtown. Yeah. I mean, it depends on whether we, they've been permitted or whether they're, you know, CO'd or whether they haven't even been started yet. So those are all different numbers, right? Like.
Yes.
And then how many aren't being lived in?
Correct.
So, I mean, if you're looking at it from a demographic or population group, like where, how, what's our population look like after we're, you know, after we've built and moved people into what we've currently approved and is under construction or, you know, close to being under construction?
Again, it sort of goes back to my, my population demographic. Because I'm just, I'm just, I'm personally anticipating that there's, that's a thousand people that are going to be added to the community when all of this gets built out. That's just my number and I just was curious as to where we were on that.
I think that's something we could look at when we go back through and look at the demographics of what we showed in our original existing conditions. And then when we're talking about what the future looks like, those numbers.
Yeah, we've done, we've done some projections based on some modeling that, that we can adjust, but.
One, I think all of those units were already part of those modeling.
Right.
So like, so the information that will come out as part of the comprehensive plan will include, you know, all of those units and, you know, the generic population of, you know, two point, three or four persons per unit, population wise.
Yeah. And again, you know, just so that it doesn't go unsaid, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, assuming nothing ever happens past what we've already approved, what, what are we expecting our population and demographics to be? And so that we can begin to think about what the needs are that we're going to have over the next five to 10 years. And then if other things get built, it's going to be added on top of that. That's.
Should we add, do you want to continue?
Yes, please.
Carry on, ma'am.
Housing respondents from open house one express caution for developing more housing without acknowledging the growing impact on the quality of life. Affordable housing needs, needs to be planned in central locations, your transit hubs and retail to be feasible. And then strong feelings that they don't want to lose Superior's charm, well, with any kind of excessive building for sustainability. Lots of support for the goals that, that we've drafted and believing the town should continue to strive to be as environmentally responsible as long as it's economically feasible. And then concerns about growth impacts on water and open space. Belief that achieving sustainability goals will necessitate, necessitate buy-ins from HOAs to realize water saving goals, which is, which is a legitimate concern. Utilities and infrastructure, these, the, the goals that, that we've drafted are what keeps Superior an attractive community. Interest in the town exploring cleaner water sources and improved electricity and gas programs to reduce bills. And then concern that safety and wellbeing may be overlooked if community growth continues rapidly. For economic development, people feel that goals have a positive vision for supporting local businesses and strengthening financial stability of the town. Strong focus should be on filling. Strong focus should be on filling the vacant spaces downtown and then investing in job training programs for youth or the disabled community.
I'm commenting on mentioning that the waters, we should get cleaner water sources. Is that a function of the problem with the ash from the fire? Because we've got arguably one of the cleanest water sources in the country. Any sense about, Renee?
Hard to say.
And then we have the filtration system. I mean, you can't really get any better than what we have.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and read through some of those comments. We might look to Jim or something to like parse out anything that maybe, you know, like useful to include in the plan as part of the, those comments.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is if we have enough water for the growth we're forecasting in light of the Colorado Water allotments perhaps being decreased over time as, as we negotiate with the other six states on who gets the, who gets what from the river.
I suggest looking at leaving out cleaner.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's always some misinformation with online materials versus people who are able to stand at a station and communicate like what exactly the verbiage means and, and things like that. So there's always gonna be, like, we had to take out a lot of misinformation about like what a vision and a goal. And, and like people were thinking the vision was not measurable. And it's like, well, that's, in this context, not what the vision means. The vision is aspirational. It's supposed to be something that we aspire to and, and things like that. So there's always gonna be a level of that, but I appreciate that comment. Parks, recreation, open space goals. Parks and open spaces are, are a huge part of, of the reason that people live here and great assets. The goals do, the draft goals do reflect the reasons why people live here and part of the identity. And then programming and opportunities for young families are important. Teens, seniors, and creating inclusive spaces such as a recreation center, library, and senior center for the town. And then transportation, which obviously is, is really closely aligned with the transportation plan that is up for adoption. Concern about traffic. There might be a mismatch between infrastructure capacity and pace of growth and then multimodal transportation infrastructure. So these, this is the feedback we got from the various opportunity areas. So 76th and Guardian could be a good site for housing, close to major roads and public transportation. Interest in understanding how each option for land use would, would economically impact the town. And then open space and views. This is for Discovery Office Park.
Sorry, Nora.
Yes.
This question about would there be a way to tell us how each option impacts us economically? We've, we've talked about doing that for all of the areas. And Renee did it partly for Town 15 when, when that discussion was going on. I, I, I hope we're going to see that in the final report because that would be very useful in guiding people's opinions about what the best uses of these properties are.
Sure. That's not necessarily a part of this scope of the comprehensive plan, but if that's a desire from Planning Commission and Town Council, we can absolutely discuss what, what that would look like.
Yeah, so I think, so we're doing a little bit of that from a scenarios perspective on, for, for the Town 15 conversation that's tabled. But for the comprehensive plan, this will talk about uses. And then the economic development chapter will talk about what is needed and necessary to, like, for the town to be successful.
Holistically.
Yes, holistically.
Right.
And so when we, so I guess there may be a component of economic development in some of the land use discussions on the, on the future land use, like, on what's, what's part of the opportunity areas for future land uses. But it won't necessarily be for every single opportunity area, all of the scenarios that we've been looking at. It'll, it'll be more comprehensive in the chapter and then more specific to a particular site if it's part of the discussion of that particular site. So we won't look at an, does that help?
Well, my, my concern is if you don't put some, I'll just say, if you don't put some numbers around it, it ends up being so generic that it doesn't provide any useful guidance. I mean, in fact, if you go back to the existing comprehensive plan, in many places it says it could be commercial or it could be residential or it could be something else. So if you're offering all those alternatives, you're not really giving much guidance, which is what the plan is supposed to be about.
Which is what we're trying to do less of in this particular update. Because we recognized that the comprehensive plan from 2012 was too broad as it relates to land uses that make sense for particular properties. And so we're trying through this process to really narrow down what residents in the community want on each of these properties so that we talk about those. But we also keep in mind through the economic development chapter and, you know, part of this discussion is, is that economics of those sites. But really, like, this is getting at what people want to see these properties used for.
But a lot of that, I mean, this is the argument that's been going on about Town 15. I mean, if, if the value hadn't been, if the value hadn't been published, that would be open space by now. And so it's difficult for people to have a sensible opinion about this without knowing what the alternatives mean economically.
I feel like Town 15 is a different animal since we own it.
Well, Zaharias has been the subject of the same kind of discussion, sir.
I, I'm gonna agree with David. I think that if we're going to, if we're gonna think about the, talking about, talking about the economics of a particular, one of these opportunity areas, it should be all of the opportunity areas and not just selected pieces of opportunity areas. Just, again, as we look forward towards the discussion ultimately.
So Renee, I think even, maybe if it doesn't go in the comp plan, but maybe something as simple as like that spreadsheet I started.
Yeah, like an appendix that has...
There's a working copy for all of us. I think that would help quite a bit. I mean, mine's somewhat crude, but to the extent it can be refined.
Sure, sure. Yes. That's useful. I think there, so we'll, we'll, we'll brainstorm on what makes sense to go in the comprehensive plan. Maybe something goes also into an appendix or we provide something to you in a future update that doesn't end up in the comprehensive plan, but you use for future reference when we have developments brought to us for these particular properties. We'll, we'll brainstorm a little bit and think about the best way to address. I, I hear what you're saying, though, and it does, I, I understand what you're saying and it makes sense. I just don't know the best way to, you know, I don't know the best way to include it. So we'll, we'll talk about it and we'll figure out what that must look like.
I did send a version of the spreadsheet to everyone. So you do have that. See if that would be kind of an idea to just answer the question, just talk about the economics.
But with economics, is there also a way to quantify the amount of having more open space increases property values throughout the town? Because no matter what, you develop a site, you're gonna get more money. But it doesn't mean that as a whole, that would up the prices of the land throughout the town. Because if you just put an industrial park there, you're gonna make a shed ton of money. But you're not gonna help the people who are living in another part of town. So no matter what, if you're just looking at economics without quality of life, quality of life will lose every single time.
At the expense potentially of the town's financial sustainability.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's just the thing. If you're looking at economics, you can't just say economics because nobody moved here just for economics. And people, I mean, all the responses include open space. No matter what, wipe away the open space, you make more money economically. It's that simple.
I mean, just, to sort of talk about it in a different kind of way. I mean, if we're talking about, if we're saying that this piece of property that is 23 acres has a value of, you know, X dollars, then we ought to be, you know, we ought to be talking about it for every one of these pieces of property.
Right, but the conversation should be centered around the, the land use that is appropriate for the property. And then discussion of the economic...
I agree with you completely.
We need to add a leader.
Yes, yeah.
I, I agree with you completely that I'm more concerned about land use than I am about value.
Yeah, and, yes. So I, like, I, I think that we're all kind of getting to the same thing, like, and through the comprehensive plan, I hope that you'll see when we have a draft that like when we talk about the land use that is being, you know, presented to you in the comprehensive plan for 76th Street, that you, you want to see, first, we want to establish what the community wants to see on the land as a use. And then we can talk about the benefits of those uses as a whole for the community.
I get it.
Particularly because in this instance, when there's an annexation involved, that annexation should require a cost benefit analysis. Like, what does it cost the town to annex this land into the town? Or, or is it a, a negative cost benefit? I'm sorry, Commissioner Vaughn.
Oh, I was just gonna say, a lot of these already have a land use associated with it. I don't know about this one with the, so, I mean, and people own them. So we can't just like change it on them under the, you know. So I feel like you would have to list what the existing land use is and then what the town would consider if the property owner wants it, changing it to, if, and, and a lot of people don't want to change the land use and therefore we should just state that, that people in the town don't want to change it or...
The properties who, that are already annexed into the town, which is every one of them except for this particular one that we still have up on the screen, do have zoning regulations. And they also have land uses that were discussed in the previous comprehensive plan. Those two things do not have to be the same. Like, the, the zoning of the property doesn't have to match what the community and council and you all think belong on those pieces of land. And part of this conversation is what do we think is the appropriate use of these properties? And then...
In the future.
In the future, yes. So like, not just, we don't need to look at what they are, what they're zoned for or what the comprehensive plan from 2012 said that they thought that it should, that it should be then. It's what do we think that it should be, you know, looking now into the future.
But if someone owns this land and it's zoned for a certain thing, they could just build on that land, that thing, no matter what, we feel.
We can legally change it.
Under them?
Yes.
Yes.
Hundred percent.
So right now, you could legally change my house to not residential while I'm living there?
Well, no.
There are criteria that you would have to meet.
There's criteria, but like if it's undeveloped land that's annexed, we can change what it's gonna be.
It's...
In terms of zoning.
Even though we don't own it.
Most of the time, it is up to the landowner. It's a very niche...
It's not done, it's not advised, but it is possible.
I mean, I've done eminent domain before and it sucks.
And that's, that's the type of...
We're not eminent domaining something because that means that we, the government takes it. This is, this is a different, this is a zoning determination.
It was for flood control.
But this isn't zoning at all.
This isn't zoning. This is just talking about the use that we find for these properties in the future.
Right.
They're zoned a particular way. And should the comprehensive plan say that something different than what they're currently zoned as is, you know, makes most sense for that? And the owners of the property find a developer who wants to develop what the comprehensive set, plan says that belongs there? Then that makes us, that's when they bring the rezoning and the final development plans and all of those documents that we typically review, those, that's, it makes it easier for us at that point.
To change it, but if the owner doesn't want to change it...
They can develop by right.
They can...
Under their current zoning.
Under their existing zoning.
Yes.
Yes. But let me give you an example. Let's just look at this piece of property here. The first bullet point, could be a good site for housing as it is close to major roads and close to public transportation. So is this piece of property now currently zoned for residential?
No.
No. And the answer then could be that the town might speak to the people, might take its efforts and say, let's, let's go to the owner of this property or as if it's gonna be annexed, when it gets annexed in, we say, oh, the town says, the town council says, well, we think that the, it should be used for housing because it's close to major roads. And so let's spend, let's use our town efforts to try to convince a private property owner to develop it in a certain kind of way.
I get that. I'm just saying it requires some owner buy-in.
And so...
I think we're all ferociously agreeing on the same point. So maybe Nora would like to continue.
They did speak to the owners. And, you know, some of the properties that were under contract or had developers interested in their properties, they, part of their due diligence for the comprehensive plan was speaking to those owners and developers to find out what the, what the developers/market wants to build and what the owners want to build on their properties. So these, these are all things that have, that have been discussed and will be taken into consideration as part of this future land use chapter. And Nora can continue.
I have a second question, sorry. This is a quick one. Vacant land that's undeveloped, is that considered open space? Okay.
That was a...
That was quick.
Yeah.
No.
It's not.
No, because those people don't own that vacant land, which is not actually open space, yeah. Okay. Looking at Discovery Office Park. Important open space buffer between downtown and Rock Creek. Keep it open. I'd like to see a high-tech employer in this area to diversify the job mix. And then accessible housing, homes where people can affordably age in place. And then you've got the breakdown of, of what the feedback we got was. Preference for no development, office or commercial or housing. And then Superior Marketplace. Since Superior has little multifamily apartment homes, this would be a great place to add those. Love to see more restaurants in town, especially places that create a sense of community. And then before adding high-density housing in this area, make sure the road infrastructure can handle it, which makes a lot of sense and aligns with the transportation plan. Original Town, we're talking about this property? Yeah. Seems like a great place to add more housing. Don't think we need more stores if we can't get downtown Superior leased. And then looking to residents of Original Town to really drive the ideas behind how the land uses are in the future.
I I know that that is in Original Town, but every time you say Original Town, I think people go back to where the houses are in Original Town, not just the little.
And that's a that's a commercial corridor, right? Like it's an important space.
Be helpful, I mean, you've got it outlined on the map, but if you could come up with something more complete than a description of it. Original Town, because as I say, Original Town generally means the area west of here, not just the little piece to the north that we're really talking about.
Right, and there are like important connections between Original Town and the marketplace, right, that could help with pedestrian and.
Maybe Original Town frontage area? Or something to say that it's like at the front of.
Yeah, we were, we were brainstorming what we could call these this little area. Just like in the last couple of days, so I, I, it's it's the commercial part, it's the 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 small undeveloped piece of the commercial section along McAslin of an Original Town.
Shorten that to a series.
We were trying to think of like a kitschy thing to just call that this little section right here.
And the original zoning there is kind of weird, right? Cause it like had like industrial but had a house and like it was very mixed up.
There's some B C and some commercials, so, yeah.
Good feedback.
Yeah.
Rebranding.
Yes, rebranding, that's right.
You could just call it the gas station area.
That's so sexy. I don't know why we wouldn't call it that.
Town Hall.
Town Expansion Area, great. Town fifteen, Recreation, Green Park, Frisbee Golf Playground. Town Hall Expansion was an interesting comment that we got. Civic uses and the need for for space. And then understanding what the value of the property is and a prime location. If it's valuable, explore development opportunities that maximize economic and social benefits to the town as a whole. Looking at Zaharius, Wetlands Pond, Wildlife, few undeveloped ecological spaces, which I'm pretty sure that the wetlands are more here.
It's the Hudson Hawkins.
Not really the part of the Zaharius property, so. Homes make more sense, provided wildlife concerns. Stores and offices would be fun there, but impact on whether homes or stores and offices would benefit Superior more as a as a whole. Resolute, rare opportunity to balance land use and give back to residents who live in high-density areas nearby. Adding Commercial Hub would diversify the tax base. Oh, my gosh, is this a planners' comment? Given existing population would be best used for something that serves the immediate community without adding residential burden and then flexible zoning space, let the market dictate. Okay, so this is more to report out on what we've done so far through engagement with the comprehensive plan. We've gotten seven hundred twenty-one responses online through surveys, in-person comments. Again, this could be multiple comments per person, but totaling them is six hundred forty-five and then ninety-seven people who have signed into events in person. And then this blue box here is just comparing the comprehensive plan page on Shape Superior to other planning efforts. And so looking at this, we're at five hundred twelve engagements, which I believe is individual people engaging with the project online. And so that has put the comprehensive plan on track per Kevin, who is much more knowledgeable about this than myself, but he says we are on track to meet or exceed online engagement with the comprehensive plan page.
If that's, I mean, I'm looking at these numbers and thinking that that probably means you could say there have been seven hundred and twenty-one, eight hundred and eighteen. If if the event attendees and the online survey responses are separate, that would add up to about eight hundred and eighteen people. Individuals responding, is that a reasonable conclusion?
So you can't, you can't parse out that information because the online surveys are like over the course of of the, you know, different surveys and different efforts that we've put into put out for people to comment on. And then those same people may have come and provided comments in at in-person events and they may have even attended an event. So one person, it's possible that one person could be represented in all three of those bubbles.
And do we count each online survey response separately or is it a by person?
It's, it's not just survey responses, it's also like we have, we've had an ideas poll up there, we've had like a map pinning activity on the on the page on Shape Superior, so it's more of like, we're trying to get down.
We shouldn't be looking at seven hundred and twenty-one people.
No.
Just seven hundred and twenty-one responses, it could have been one person did seven hundred and twenty-one.
I mean, technically, but so the five hundred and twelve on the Shape Superior page is kind of a more accurate way of, you know, capturing the individual person who signed on to the page.
Right.
Yes, compared to other Shape Superior planning efforts.
Right, so they would be collected in the same manner. So like, if if they've signed on to the comprehensive plan page, that same num, like if they signed on to the civic space page, that would be counted for, like, it would be equally counted for all of those projects that are on Shape Superior. And we're not done with our engagement, so our number will continue to grow. Where other than the North Pool, those, the rest of those are not, you know, active projects.
But that's, I mean, I think what the population of Superior is about thirteen thousand at the moment or something like that, so. I mean, if you figure that they'll, one-third of those people are kids, that leaves you with about eight thousand adults. If you could get four hundred of those, if you had four hundred individual responses, that would be five percent of the population. I'm not a great statistician, but I think that's about the level at which you start getting if you have genuinely, I forget what the description of the survey is.
Statistically significant.
Independent responses.
Yeah.
You're beginning to get statistically accurate or supportable results, right?
Yes, but this is a self-selective method, so for it to be statistically significant, it would need to be like mailed out to or it's it's not a statistically significant method, but traditionally with comprehensive plans, they're so hard for people to understand the level of how how does my input even matter in this instance? And and that's where those face-to-face conversations are really important to help people understand like, hey, it's really important for you to get involved. And I'd like to invite you to our open house event, and that's why we've done pop-ups and and things like that to help people understand like these long-range planning efforts are important and they might feel kind of distant from your day-to-day life, but they do matter. And they influence future zoning decisions and and that's really where the rubber meets the road.
Did you have a goal for how many people you'd really like to get responses from?
We didn't have a goal, we we just hoped for the best and we did, once we got the results back from the initial survey, that's when we found that we didn't get enough input from renters or folks that own businesses in town. And so we supplemented with a renter survey that was mailed out and then canvassing of of businesses like downtown and and in other areas of the town that we felt it was important to hear input from.
Thank you.
So we understand that some of the input from the our last open house, our first open house was a little bit skewed towards the Town Fifteen and the open space discussion. And so we're looking for for feedback from you all if you know, we have some ideas of ways that that we could restructure engagement moving forward, but you all are are experts in this community and and we'd love to hear from you. Any ideas that you have for how we can diversify the voices that we're hearing from? We have ideas again, like we'd really like to hear from you or ways that we can disseminate information that is correct information and that's not disinformation and I mean, it's obviously really difficult with social media, but any other thoughts, Renee?
Well, I was gonna say, do we want to talk about like what what where we're where we are going to be at for the next phase of engagement so that maybe, cause that might help them brainstorm how to engage in.
Yes, okay, yes, so we.
Quick question, I mean, in your first, one of your first slides, you mentioned the Chili Fest and the Fall Festival that's coming up at the beginning of September. Are you planning to do anything at that?
Yeah, so our next step here is we've written a lot of recommendations and we're refining those with with town staff and and various departments. And so our next kind of step is to publish an online draft of the draft comprehensive plan and then we'll do engagement around that. So what we would, oops, sorry, what we would use events like the Chili Fest for is to advertise the next open house, similar to what we did with the farmer's market or pop-up event that was meant to be a farmer's market. And so we'll we'll be using those events that are leveraging people that are already going to be there, meeting people wherever they are, things like that. Getting them to help help them understand it's really important for your input to be a part of this process. And then get them to come to the open house event and we can present some of the items from the draft plan and get feedback on those from the community. But it will be available on Shape Superior and there will be an online option for for folks who are unable to attend the in-person event. But that's kind of our our next step and we're probably looking at sometime in October for a a large-scale open house event. But we can schedule that and and make it a priority for advertising it at some of the fall events.
I I think it might be useful to like kind of you know, say some of these goals that the town has, like affordable housing and like I think like engaging the Sundance Film Festival might be a future interest. And kind of seeing the community like these sort of goals that need to have like an idea of where they would go and say, hey, affordable housing is one of our goals. Which of these properties could you see it on? Instead of like taking the property and saying, what do you want to see here? Instead saying, we have these goals, where should they go? Like taking a goal to the property, like the opposite approach, instead of starting with the property, start with the goal. And then you can say like, here's all the properties we have, which would this go with or which would this just maybe just a different approach on how you show it. Cause I think when people are so focused on the property, they aren't seeing the goals of the town.
Yes, I I hear that. It's such a cart before the horse situation too, because as, you know, Town Fifteen is your only town-owned property, so you have the most control over that. And saying like affordable housing would be great in a different area is an option, but it's not.
But unless you have owner.
Fully under your control.
Yes. Yeah.
One of the things we did at the very beginning was to go to each of the towns committees, this was all parks and open space history. It might be an idea just to go back to them and see if they have any, I mean.
We brought the goals, I should have included that in my update slide. We went back to all of the committees in the last month. And so we brought the individual chapter goals, so like the parks and open space, the parks committee and the open space committee both have the, you know, opens, the parks recreation and open space chapter. And so I brought those chapter goals with some of their, you know, suggested strategies to each of those committees and had them discuss, like I went through and talked about the importance of how how these all kind of feed back into our vision and and mission for the town that's in the comprehensive plan and then had them consider each of the goals that were that we, you know, had as part of the survey. They, you know, edited and added to and changed some of the verbiage in those goals. They talked about some of the strategies. So I went to Caps, we went to the Historic Commission. We went to Open Space, we went to Park, we went to, Alex took stuff back to the Youth Committee. Am I missing a committee? I think we went back to all of the committees that we went to that we went to to get their feedback, but I didn't, we didn't go through all of the opportunity zones and we didn't go through all of the goals of other chapters. We went specifically towards the goals and strategies that pertained to that particular committee's goals.
I I also wanted to mention that back-to-school nights are coming up. And I know most parents are just trying to get in and out, so maybe if you had like two or three questions that you asked them and just kept it to that, you might get some good participation.
Coming up like when? Next week?
Next two weeks.
It is like end of August, I want to say.
End of August, okay.
Yeah. Chili Chili Fest is gonna be one of those places that I think there are gonna be a lot of people attending.
Yeah.
And so to the extent that we can capitalize upon those, I just, for whatever information you think would be
I'm just saying the back-to-school nights, you're probably gonna capture a different crowd than you would.
Way different demographic.
Because these are, especially at the elementary schools, because those people might not be getting out to events as much as other people with small children.
Or even just like a flyer to take home to do an online survey in schools.
Yeah.
Something, I know they each have like their lobby and so if you set up a little table in the lobby as parents are coming and going, you could probably get, but you you gotta make it pretty quick.
We also have to clear it with the school district, which is a process, but it's not an inhibited process.
With the Girl Scouts, we've had a table before.
Okay, yeah.
So I know it's possible.
It's a good idea to look at the.
Yeah, and it would just require like one person.
See if there's a way to get at least a flyer into. See if there's a way to get at least a flyer into, you know, into something so that we can advertise through that way.
And there are other, there are other events and there are people who come to the Community Center and also the Downtown Civic Center. And to the extent that there were, if you had a flyer, you can say, hey, look, you know, here's a flyer, you know, and go to this website. You know, to the extent, again, we may get repeat business, we may get new business, we may get whatever. But as we sort of move towards the conclusion of this process, and there are issues that you would like more information, just again, those are another opportunities for us as well.
I've got a comment. So Nora, you talked about an open house. I would like to propose maybe doing more of a workshop kind of thing where you have residents grouped up around tables and maybe take Amanda's idea where, okay, these are our goals. What would you put where? Give people a map, but have, you know, six or eight people or however many people around a table discussing pros and cons and trying to come to some sort of consensus table by table. Because it is a complicated issue and people are going to have different levels of knowledge. They're going to have different perspectives. But I think having some face-to-face discussion among residents so that you can kind of start coalescing around some ideas, I think could be really helpful. I think it's really important to have residents engaged in a conversation with other residents, not just sticky notes and dots and that kind of thing. And it is something that has been done for, I believe it was done for the last comprehensive plan. I know for sure that it was done for planning for Downtown Superior. And I think it's, I think it's been done for other efforts.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Anne. That is, I would love to hold that event. The issue, or I guess the hurdles with that are that, well, I guess maybe even part of it is that that was the thinking behind the speaker series was that it was topic-based. We brought some subject matter experts and that the community was able to engage and ask questions. And those who weren't able to attend could watch the video and then had an opportunity to ask questions on the Shape Superior page where we can answer them in a moderated forum. The struggle with that type of intimate setting as we get to the really later stages of the comprehensive plan is that we're trying to get as much engagement as possible and move people through and make sure they're understanding from beginning to end what this process has looked like, what, where we've gotten our data, where we've gotten our community input, why the recommendations look the way that they do and where we go from here. And that is, the way that we do that in the most efficient way is more of an open house style event. You do get to have one-on-one conversations with people in terms of the facilitators at each station, being able to talk to people and hear their concerns and things like that. The focus group style where you're at a table with people who are interested in a topic and maybe you can move from table to table and things like that, that's a great way to get input and to hear, and for community members to hear other community members' concerns. It's just, it's not the most efficient and budget-friendly way to go about things. But that's not to say that it's not feasible. We're more than welcome to open the conversations about how we can expand the scope if that's what the leadership is looking for. But at this time, we are scoped to do another pop-up event to help advertise the future open house, to discuss the draft plan with community members and then do that, that open house as more of a walkthrough, you know, community board event type situation.
And you expect that open house to be in October?
Pending that we are all able to move through a couple of drafts and make sure that it's at a level that everyone is confident that is up to the community satisfaction, yes.
So Nora, my one concern with that is we had an open house and you collected a lot of feedback. However, I don't feel like the feedback we got shows any sort of consensus. The level of support for individual questions ranged between seven and 51, I think. So we barely, you know, one question hit a majority. One question was 50/50. And then there were several questions where we just didn't have support for the concept. You know, we, even on the vision, we didn't get hit 50% support for the vision. So I'm having a hard time imagining how you will take that information to the next level to inform our work.
What kind of shows that people aren't as interested in it if they don't reply back? You can take that as a way of showing that's not a top priority. If 50 people answer one, four people answer another, four people, that means 46 people don't care. So you can kind of rank the order of importance to people.
But we, you know, if you just look at the vision, we didn't have 50% support for the vision. But I don't know that we have enough information to say, oh, this is what our vision should be.
Well, and so the way that the comments are categorized is really difficult to parse. Because people, when we said, when it says that only a certain percentage of people support the vision, those were people who stated that they supported the vision. Other people commented on things in the vision. And so their comments were counted elsewhere, not as supporting the vision. So it's really difficult to see, you know, if people generally supported the vision, you know, maybe more than half did or didn't, I don't know. You'd have to go through and read them all. And then you're guessing as to whether or not their comment is, you know, saying, I don't support this at all. It should be changed to say something like this. Or I support this vision generally, but I think it should say something like this. Because you're putting thoughts into the words that they wrote.
It's almost impossible to marry the quantitative and the qualitative responses.
And we didn't ask yes/no questions. We asked for comments. And so we got comments. And those support, you know, at 18 or 24%, are literally the comments that said, I support this. So it's not, it's not, you know, it's hard, you can't say that the others did or didn't support it. They just didn't say that.
Okay, well, that's, that's good context.
And it's such a hard science because you can get so much from a statistically significant survey where every question has an answer and there are no other options. But you miss a lot. You miss a lot of context. You miss a lot of how people are experiencing things or why they're experiencing things. And so it's, that's why we write and construct the surveys the way that we do is to get both. And some topics are much more suited to a quantitative question than others. And that's why it's perfectly imperfect.
Well, I think, you know, noting the scope of work that we have for Cushing-Turrell Moving Forward that Nora kind of went through, maybe like we can, we can say ideas for an open house that may look different or feel different than the boards, but that would kind of act the same as an open house structure. So we don't have to do three boards at each station. We can have, like, we can try to think outside the box for activity-based, open-house-friendly ways of engaging.
Yeah, and that's kind of where this slide is going. Like, we're looking for feedback. We understand that the deck, the deck was stacked a little bit at the last open house. And so we're really looking for ideas that you have. We have our own ideas, but yeah, I'd love to hear from commissioners.
Could you do what Anne is suggesting and just have an open house with some table, you know, some focus groups that have, you know, like discussion groups at tables during the open house?
That is definitely a possibility. It might require a little bit more manpower and that might just, if we can rely on town staff for that or if it requires more of us. But yeah, we are very open to that.
I think you're just trying to find ways to get more butts in the seats, pretty much, more people to show up. That's like the-
I think that's always the goal.
Yeah, so you have one or the other and it's hard to do a workshop when more people are there. So you'd be specific in who's invited to the workshop. Or you have an open house, like if you want more bodies, it's harder to do the interactive discussion pieces. But there may be a way to morph the more people with something slightly more interactive than what we've, what we did in the last one. I doubt, I, you know, like there's, there's open houses all the time for all kinds of events. And I'm curious, like, if there's ideas that, like, you know, putting something out in the middle and having people come in from both sides or having something where people have to make choices or, I don't know, like, we can, like, I don't know.
I was just gonna say that back when I lived in LA, we would do screenings where you'd watch the movie and then afterwards you'd fill out a survey. And then after that, they'd look at the survey results and kind of pick people that had interesting perspectives. And then there would be like a discussion focus group with like, so they would like, I wonder if at the open house you could have kind of a like one table set up for a discussion group and while people are there and they see someone that's really opinionated or has a unique perspective or something, they could invite them to the little discussion group that's facilitated. But, you know, like kind of a, some way to get some deeper thought with people that look like they're interested in providing it. And just, I'm just saying that I experienced this where they like kind of filtered it down and they do it a lot. So maybe they were onto something where they could kind of divert some people to a discussion group and maybe get a little bit more input. But it would be like a smaller group so that you could manage the big group and the smaller group just to get some more in-depth.
I think one of the challenges, I mean, I like the workshop idea as well. We did a lot of them for the Northwest SubArea Plan. But the challenge was that you had to get people pretty much on the same page to start with. So it would be almost like asking for, you should do this presentation to everybody first so that everybody's coming from the same information basis. And then they can have a sensible discussion among themselves to see what they like. But I mean, that's pretty, that would be quite challenging to do. I mean, the other thing you could do is you could pick areas that you think you would like to have more input on and do something simple or just have a background discussion on those and then divide those up and say, okay, this table take that problem, this table take that problem and get different feedback. I mean, I, I mean, what I think's important is for the community as a whole to feel that this comprehensive plan represents the opinions of the community. It's not just something that's been written by the consultants, even if the consultant's ideas are great and we all really agree with them. I mean, there's, I mean, having the community involved to the extent you can, I think gets more buy-in on the results than, well, as much as you can get.
We're all trying to figure out how to plan this and assist you in ways that I think you are experts in. To the extent that there's an open house that doesn't end with the open house so that the open house provides the draft that you're looking to do and then gives people an opportunity to follow up the open house with perhaps a moderated online session, which also doesn't mean that you have to have 19 people doing this from Cushing-Turrell on issues that are, that people would be interested in commenting on to the, but again, you know, start off big and then, you know, to say, okay, well, we need, you know, these many discussion groups. It may be that there's like two people who are interested in this. You don't need that group. We all know what the hot-button issues are gonna be.
And I think that's part of where those speaker series came in and maybe where that can be a tool that lives on, right? Like if somebody, if one of the topics is economic development or housing, we can provide a link to the speaker series video and continue to get input that way. But that is, that's definitely a strategy that we've been employing through the Shape Superior page is we have an in-person event and then we mirror it almost identically to an online opportunity for folks to give input. The downside there is that there's not someone to break everything down. So as much as we can do with graphics and text and everything to like try to help people understand these really complex topics of land use and transportation and housing and economic development, it's really helpful to have somebody there to talk it through at a station. And we're not able to do that online. And so then we have to take that input with a grain of salt. Because there wasn't somebody to walk them through the information that we have gathered, that we've heard from community input that have informed our recommendations thus far.
And I'll add that we've had some conversations with like our communications team about different ways of interacting after. So like your idea of having the open house and then following up afterwards with people who are interested in particular topics has come up in our conversations. And, you know, there's pros and cons to allowing people to, you know, I'm interested in this and I want to read this and I want to comment on this, but I don't care about all this other stuff. If you get too many people who only care about this thing and not enough who care about all this other stuff, then that's not helpful per se. So, and, you know, it's possible to create, you know, scenarios where you- to create, you know, scenarios where you have like, you know, answer our survey and you have five really big questions. And then if you're interested, you can take five more questions that are part, you can answer questions pertaining to this, pertaining to this, pertaining to this or this. So like there, you know, we, we're looking at different ways of following up with people and seeing if we can, how, you know, if we can get more people to engage on like big things. And then if they're interested in continuing down into more detail, then providing different options for that.
I'm not telling you how to do it. And, and I'm not even suggesting that I have a better idea. I'm just concerned, I think we're, you're hearing the concern, that if we had an open house with the draft comprehensive plan, that we're gonna be all over the place on comments and pieces and the population attending might be small.
Who we've heard from.
Who you've already heard from. And so I'm just, it's just a concern. And again, this is your business, not mine. I'm sure you'll come up with a way that maximizes the efforts of your, of your people in developing the, the draft and looking for the kinds of comments that you're seeking. And we'll figure out how to do it. I mean, you could always figure out, like I said, you know, the hot button issues. But, you know, that's, you're right. That's not gonna be giving us sort of the big picture kind of thing. So I, I leave it in your hands. You know, I'm just, I, I don't know that I could come up with the, you know, an answer that, that is gonna be helpful to the extent that the population that comes to the open house is going to be able to-
I mean, that's who you hear from.
Provide you the information you're looking for.
I, I think on, on slide seven, another cultural intelligence speaker series slide, there's a really important takeaway, which is success with gathering public participation can be found in meeting people where they're, where they are by engaging them in places that don't require them to go out of their normal schedule. So we're in a residential community. Door knock, put some flyers on doors with the QR code. I'm, I was still bummed. We, we didn't see any of this happening at, you know, the Fourth of July parade. Nice. I saw Chairman Harper. I wish we were at a booth trying to elicit more engagement. But, but what I want to point out is, you know, meeting people where they're at, but you have to meet them with the, the, the language too. Like, don't call it an open house. I don't wanna go outside of my normal schedule to go to, to an open house. I want to go to the Shape Superior Benefit Concert in downtown where I, I get to hear like the awesome, like the summer markets are awesome. They have great artists, play a couple songs, then explain an opportunity area with the actual, like we said, like trying to chase that perception versus reality thing. Like, hey, we as a town are committed to affordable housing. We have these many opportunities. If we could develop in these areas and not affect density or traffic congestion, how likely would you be willing to like accept that going into one of these areas? I think like meeting people where they're at is to, to go door knocking doors and inform first. But yeah, the, the summer markets, I, last time I was out there, I was like, if we had just a bunch of round tables out in the amphitheater, you do three banjo songs, you come up, have a five-minute spiel on an area that is actually informing, and then you go, okay. And now we all know American Idol. Vote now for, you know, these agree with statements based on what you just heard so that we can get more of that broad spectrum of, of perceptions and engagement and not just the people that attend an open house.
I love that. That will require quite a change order.
I'm not in charge of scope.
It's not, it's not in the- Just a marketer.
It's not in the budget, but I, it's such a, like, it's the, the intention there is so pure and great and, and we love that. And we're happy to support.
Bill Delacruz's suggestion, we asked him, but he, he commented on this. And he said, in some of the surveys they've done, what they do is they actually ask people for their cellphone numbers and then they text them the questions they want answered so they can just answer the texts. I, I don't know if we could ball our question. I mean, if you're going to be handing out things at Chili Fest, you could, that would be an opportunity to get cellphone numbers from people. If you, if, I don't know if that would be of any help to you if you could frame the questions in a way that would be-
And who did that come from?
Sorry?
Who did that come from?
Bill Delacruz.
Yeah.
At the cultural intelligence.
Yeah, so it would require some software?
Yeah, and I, I mean, we could look into it.
We can talk to Kevin about that, yeah. If that's a, if that's something that's available to the town, absolutely, yeah.
You'd have to be pretty careful about the questions, of course. But if you had a lot of people answering it, I mean, he, he said, I think my recollection, he said they only have asked three or four questions because that's about as money as people are willing to answer. But at least if you've got, I mean, if you've got, I don't know, there's usually several thousand people at the Chili Fest. So I mean, even if you've got a small fraction of them to text it back, I mean, there are going to be a lot more people who feel they've been involved in some way, which would be helpful.
It's, it's helpful. The trap, the, the challenge there is that we're talking about some pretty complex topics. So asking a one question, one question about a really complex topic can, can sometimes steer us in a different direction than lots of questions that we've asked in the past that have steered us in, in one direction have, have brought us. And that, and that's the world we live in right now, right? Like, attention spans are so short and-
The, the text might be, answer the damn survey, would you please?
Exactly, yeah. And we've worked in communities that have that kind of network. But it's, it's never something that we have, have had as a consultant because it would require some kind of database of, of phone numbers. Any other questions?
Have we given you anything useful yet?
Yes, I think so. I mean, we're, we're moving towards, well, so I guess the, the question is, and we're, we're talking to town council next week, is, is an open house the direction that we want to head in the future? And if not, are, is, is town council and the project team? And, and are, are you open to expanding the budget or a change order or something to target engagement in a way that, that isn't in the current scope of the project?
It's a good question to ask them.
Not you. Understood.
Well, I was always a little disappointed. But I thought when we got the 150,000 from extra dollar that we were actually really quite well financed. But when half of it went to the transportation survey, that was a big chunk out of what was available for the comprehensive plan.
So for the open house, were you thinking, would, would there be actual recommendations or suggested uses for each of the opportunity areas? It seems like if we were specific like that and then try to get, okay, here's what we recommend and here's why we did it. What do you think? Yea or nay? And then do something like that. But again, getting the yea or nay is dependent upon educating the people so they're voting, you know, with, with intelligence, knowing what the challenges are, what we need to accomplish.
Yes, so I think the intent of the last open house was understanding that the market is where it is right now. You have control over one property in this town and, and you have say over what happens on other properties that are zoned in, in certain areas. But there, the market is gonna do what the market is gonna do. And so by giving a couple of options for each of these opportunity sites gives the town flexibility to not have to update their comprehensive plan every five years, react and proactively plan for, for what the market might produce, particularly as it comes to office uses and, and lending how it is right now. And then also here, there are, are really clear opinions from the, the citizens about what, what they want for certain uses on certain properties. So that sounds like a cop-out, but-
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo what I think you heard here a little while ago and that is, and, and I'm also gonna say, add another piece to this. If you're asking my opinion as to whether or not there should be another open house, knowing the people in this town and the idea of transparency is a priority, the answer is yes, I would do another open house. When the plan is in draft form, the comprehensive plan is in draft form so that people can see it and then, and therefore comment. But the other side of it is that if we only focus in on the idea of the opportunity areas, the, the particular pieces of property, we're missing a whole, the whole point of, of the comprehensive, of what I see as the comprehensive plan. And that is that we should be looking at it, you know, way up here and not on individual parcels. And part of the problem we had, I think, at the open house that we had was that we had the hot button issue of Town 15, which stimulated a whole bunch of people to say, you gotta go to this meeting and you gotta go there and you gotta talk about this one topic. And while there were other boards and other things and other issues, I'm still not sure we got the kind of information that I really, that I really wanted to get from, from, you know, 95 people who show up and have a conversation. So yes, I'm suggesting another open house. And yes, I'm saying not opportunity zone focused.
David, you've been sitting there remarkably quiet. You can't spend the whole evening without saying something. You always have good comments, so how about providing a few now?
I think given Cushing Terrell's scope of work and responsibility for the expected deliverables here along with town staff's efforts, I'm relatively satisfied that they've done their job and that they will continue to do their job to deliver this comprehensive plan. Planning commission's ideas, they're all strong ideas, but I think Nora keeps reminding us that there is a limited scope and budget associated with this. And we should let them finish their work.
Were you paid?
Yeah.
Steve, you've been kind of quiet as well.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree. I, I think they've done a good job. I think the scope, we, we agreed to a scope and we're, we're, we're having suggestions that are attempting to expand it a little bit and we don't have the authority to spend more money. And so I, I think they've done a good job. I also think the October idea of having an open house is a good idea again. So yeah, I don't have anything else.
Are you actually through with your presentation? Oh, we haven't, we, oh, next steps.
There we are. Yep, we've got town council next week. Community outreach phase three, which is, I think, really a directive of next week will be understanding if town council is wanting to expand the scope or, or not as, as we've discussed tonight. And, and then, yeah, getting a draft plan out, out to the community and getting feedback and understanding that it's really difficult to get input on these, these spinning plates that all have to do with each other. It's the town's financial sustainability and also how the town can serve various uses. And, and that's, it's really, it's so complex that it's really difficult for anyone to fully understand that's not a land use planner. And trying to get input on that and in a comprehensive way is, is tricky. And if anybody has the silver bullet, please let me know. But we're, we're gonna do our best and, and we'll take guidance from you all and, and town council moving forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any more questions or comments that they'd like to?
I, I just wanted to ask, what is available for comments still? So I know under the comprehensive plan on the webpage, there's no surveys open, but people can still post pin places and post ideas, right? Are those the two ways people can still participate right now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And is there like any active communications going out from town about those? Okay.
Not right now because they're drafting the plan. It, it's difficult to continue to take comments and continue to provide them information while they're working on drafting the plan, which is part of why the Fourth of July was not capitalized on is because, you know, we were trying to compile the information that we had just gotten from everyone and, and move them into the next phase. Because we could have left everything open, but then we wouldn't have been able to start the next phase, which would then push the, you know, well, one, expand the budget and two, push the, you know, project into the, you know, down the road more and more. So the Chili Fest will definitely, you know, have something there. And then we'll talk with Nora and meet with the council next week to discuss, you know, what the next phase of engagement looks like with all of your ideas.
And how about you? I think you're muted at that.
There you go. No, I'm unmuted, sorry about that. Yeah, I, I look forward to next steps. I look forward to seeing a draft. I do think any effort we can make to get the word out about the next event, Chili Fest is a great idea. Something oriented towards either the school population or maybe going to one of the, you know, going to soccer games or, you know, venues where there are families of young children to promote activity. You know, if we can't get into the schools, then that would be an alternative. I know that there's a senior group that meets at the community center. There's a veterans group that meets at the community center. Untold other, other things, you know, I, I think using the civic space and the community center as a way to get the word out for participation could be really helpful. You know, little flyers with QR codes that can be passed out. You know, and those kind of scenarios would be really, could be really helpful. So that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? What? No? Good. I think you've actually reached the end. Thank you very much. That was a great presentation.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you all. I can do this. I believe.
Thanks.
Oh.
Oh!
Oh. I can do it. Oh, wow. Ta-da.
I put together some updates. Oh.
I put together some updates. The transportation plan, the final draft is going to council next week. There's a link here. If you want to review it, I can send it out. It'll go out in the packet tomorrow. So if you just look in the packet tomorrow, you'll see the transportation plan final draft.
That's a good question. How, don't they really need to know what's kind of recommended from the comp plan in terms of the development? I mean, if there's like high rises that go down in the marketplace or, or near CDOT behind Costco, I mean, that's, how are they counting for things like that?
Yeah, they've participated. I don't know, Nora, do you, like, sorry. Sorry to bring you back up.
I thought I was off duty. No, that we- I thought I was off duty. No, that we've provided them with some scenarios for density, and they've modeled their transportation models off of off of the densities that we've provided based on discussions with the property owners, potential density scenarios and things like that. So they are based on land use.
Yeah. So they'll, as part of the transportation chapter, like, they've been considering the fact that we're going through this process and participating in it throughout their plan update. So the transportation chapter of the comprehensive plan will speak to this final plan. They'll be, you know, like, I guess the way that I look at it as the comprehensive plan is kind of a bigger picture, and it points to the, in this case, the transportation plan for very, like, when people talk about SMART goals, the SMART goals are in the transportation plan and like, the like, the SMA part is in the transportation plan. You know, like, you don't get to like, the very minute details that the transportation plan gets to in the comprehensive plan. And so that's been part of their thought process as they've gone through this process.
So question, so you've had certain ideas for what's gone on the marketplace and again, 76th Street. Is there anything in the transportation plan that might limit what we should suggest for those areas? I mean, there's only a certain capacity at Marshall McCaslin. Can it support anything imaginable there? What's the limit?
I can go or you can go.
You can go.
I I think the land use piece of the comprehensive plan is only considering what is feasible, transportation wise. And that's also considering, like, if there needed to be additional lanes or if changes needed to be made to the transportation infrastructure. We're not considering anything that would be infeasible based on the findings from the studies that the transportation planners have done. Is that aligned with what you're understanding?
Actually, the record, once the draft plan comes out, what's in there is within what's recommended by the transportation plan without highly expensive changes.
But what's correct, but what's in the comprehensive plan is not as prescriptive as what's in the transportation plan. So what's in the comprehensive plan is is relatively high level.
Sure.
We can assign a range of density, but it's it's meant to be more of a guiding document and less of, it's not it's not the zoning code, right? Like, it's it's meant to inform future updates to the zoning code, but it's not it's not zoning.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. And the transportation plan takes into consideration those, you know, possible uses and looking at the infrastructure and how it exists and looking at the future and, you know, how people may be using the transportation system in the future and, you know, what needs there are for certain areas of town.
New and exciting things in the transportation plan? Or is it just the roundabout and the extra turn lane that we know of?
I don't I don't know. I've skimmed it and I've read pages of it. And then I get scrap distracted by, you know, a squirrel, you know, there's lots of squirrels around my office.
How many, just out of curiosity, how many pages is it?
Well, with all of the and the appendices, it's like 398 pages or something. So yeah, the appendices are a large section of that. So it's not the plan itself is not that big, but the document itself, it's very large.
I guess actually, just to go back to the comprehensive plan, do you have a, I mean, are you going to be, we're going to be having appendices with economic data on the market and things like that included in the plan? I mean, projections for future sales or those kind of issues?
Sure. I I think those are those are elements we haven't gotten to yet. Right now, we're really focusing on what the recommendations are, where how to get you to where you want to be. And then, once we, once we've put together a draft document, I've we've actually just this week talked about a draft table of contents and what that looks like. And if we want the entire, every survey that we've done, all survey results in the appendix, if they're linked, if every analysis that we've done is in the appendix, or if it's a link, or we haven't gotten there yet. But if anyone has like, strong opinions on that, I think we're really open to it.
Are we going to see the draft before it goes out?
Renee?
I so depending on the timing, if there's an opportunity where we have a meeting and I can provide you an update and send you a draft in advance, I will do that.
Okay.
It just, you know, it depends on when they finalize the draft and when we plan all of when when meetings are taking place. It it doesn't always fall perfectly within the planning commission's meeting schedule. And it's not something that I would, you know, like, have us meet just to review because it's it's a time consuming process. And then when we have all of our outreach, then we'll have you participate in that portion of it.
But bear in mind that officially, this is our work.
Sure.
Right? You know, I mean, the town code and the Colorado revised statutes both say this is what the planning commission is supposed to do. I think it would be good if we could see the draft before it goes to the public. Otherwise, I'm going to get asked questions that I have no clue about the answer to.
That's fair.
I completely agree.
Sure. Then I will make it a priority to make sure you get a draft.
Yeah.
Whether or not we have a meeting to discuss it, we'll just make sure that you have the ability to review it before anything else goes public. Does that?
Well, if we're going to have an open house.
Yes.
We should see the draft before it goes to the public.
Yeah.
And for preference, we should actually be at the open house.
Would, yeah, so that that'll be something I want to follow up with you on, like, how you want to participate in future, like, in events moving forward. Because I know you all talked about wanting to, you know, you would man a table, for instance, or attend something and and participate in different ways. So I think that's part of our conversation for the next phase of engagement and how we go about that and how we can use you in order to like, decrease the number of hours that we, you know, pay for their services while still getting the information out that we're wanting to get out. So but I hear you. I will make sure that you get a copy of the draft before it goes out public in any way. And then we'll have further conversations about engagement.
That's when we sent you back comments saying, this is terrible.
We we open, we're open to constructive comments, actually.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's evacuation?
Yeah. So there was a comment that got sent to you all in an email. And Anne wanted to talk about it here. And we can just quickly, you know, thanks, Nora. It's more of a, I'm bringing it up so that you all know that I saw that you were on an email. And someone, you know, voiced a concern about having a future evacuation plan for Sagamore neighborhood using that northern exit to the Guardian Storage property. And that's something that when the garbage Guardian Storage comes back for their FDP process, we can have further discussions. There's like a basically like a dead end at the top at the northern section of Sagamore. Yeah. And there's, you know, people who who would want that to be full access. I don't think it will be full asset access because Guardian Storage is going to be a private ownership. But that doesn't mean that it won't, we couldn't talk about having it be an evacuation, like, access for for evacuation in an emergency event. So that will for sure be part of the FDP process and conversation, whether or not, one, fire wants it, two, Sagamore residents want it, three, you all think it's necessary, you know, like, those are all the, those are, those are the things that will come up during the conversations for the FDP.
Well, we were very lucky last time that the fire happened to arrive at about 11 o'clock in the morning.
Last time.
Kids were at school, et cetera, et cetera. So I mean, an evacuation route somewhere other than, because both of the roads lead west, lead east at the moment. I mean, a third, you can't really have too many of them.
Yep. It's a great point. I don't have anything to add to that. But we'll definitely have those conversations with the FDP process. Like, we can only do what's brought to us when it's brought to us. And she was really just commenting on the, you know, their their PD zoning. But that doesn't focus on the site plan specific and definitely doesn't talk about if there's an emergency, how if we could utilize that, that. Next meeting is August 19. And we're going to review the Kight Route Crossing FDP. That's the, yep, the Discovery Office Park in downtown on Old Railway, Senior Affordable Housing Project.
Any funding?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yeah. So there, I mean, they've got, they got the big chunk, and now they're applying all over. It's blows my mind, the affordable housing financing process. I, and now I know, I used to know this much, and now I know this much. And they seem to like, have like a list that's about this long. So it's wild. But they are moving forward and.
Excellent.
So, yeah, that's something to look forward to.
It is. Could you say the same thing about Bixby's folly?
I wish I had an update on that. There, I don't have an update. They're still, you know, planning to move forward as far, that's the last we've heard.
And the hotel?
The hotel closed, so the new owners of like, the hotel chain took ownership and are moving the project forward. So we, I think they expect to have building permits paid for by the end of August. It's it's coming.
Good.
Yes.
So that's the new hotel?
That's the new hotel.
The new hotel.
Yeah.
Still nothing on the western?
The Element? No, nothing on the Element site.
How about the food court? Any more word on that?
They're also planning to submit an FDP application, amendment application soonish. They're working, they're working on their FDP drawings. So that will be coming, I expect, sometime in the next few three months, maybe. I mean, like, their application is expected sooner than that, but like, before you all sometime in the next three, four months, maybe.
They seem more anxious about moving ahead compared to Bixby's?
Well, Bixby's was excited when they got their FDP and permit drawings in. It's just the, you know, the circumstances of the ownership changed. And that has to be dealt with before they can move forward with the next phase.
I mean, are they, to your knowledge, are they still planning to move forward?
Yes, that's my understanding. That's what I've been told.
Did you ever hear, I mean, how do you ever, how often do you hear from them ever?
Well, I personally don't hear from them. But I know that our economic development manager speaks with them. And maybe that's something I could consider, having Ellen come and talk to you all for some meeting and give you an update on a lot of these things that.
That would actually be pretty, well, that would actually be pretty helpful, as long as she actually has something to tell us.
I, you know, I think she 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 would have more to say about things. And she has more background knowledge and understanding of how the process works, especially when it comes to businesses and how they're financing and the intricacies of how long that whole process takes to go through downtown, filling, you know, the spaces and, you know, she's she's well versed in that and in speaking to that in a way that I am not at all. So I'll see if she's available to come, not probably not the August 19 one, but maybe in September, I'll see if she has availability to come to one of our meetings and just give you all an update. And she can introduce herself and tell you what she does.
Okay, that would be great, actually. Glad to hear that. Glad to hear that. Okay. Do we have anything else for anybody else? Or anybody else wants to say anything else? Fine.
Thanks, Anne.